And so I call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for September 15th, And Sheri, could you please call roll? I see John Trent's name up on the board at least.
Yep, Chair Quilisi.
Come here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Sorry, I'm on mute. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. And one vacancy.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Lottis, would you lead us, please?
Sure. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is Public Communications. Time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items that are not on the scheduled agenda. Sheri, do we have anyone who's signed in for Public Communications?
We do not, and no emails either.
Okay, then I saw some emails this week that are still relevant to things that are going to come in the future, the El Roblar. Okay, well, let's move on then to the consent item. And what we have is the minutes of the special meeting of the Planning Commission a week ago. Any commissioners that have refinements to that? I think I gave Sheri a couple of nits.
That's right.
Oh, wait a minute. Are you -- I'm sorry, I was spacing. Are you mentioning the minutes? Are you talking about the minutes, Steve?
Yes, we're now talking about the minutes of the September 8th special meeting.
I just -- oh, you may have already seen it. There was, I think the attendance includes Commissioner Swift.
Right.
Yes, we changed that. Thanks.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
I see another one.
There was three little oddballs that the chair found.
Did you catch the, my title as well?
Director.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, good. Thank you.
Your voicemail greeting is still wrong. Sir?
Oh. I know Chair Quilisi has eagle eyes, so that's good.
What was the third thing? So we had Commissioner Swift should be strike, change on Lucas Sebert. And then what was the third item that was changed?
Boy.
Or was there one?
On the first page, the motion under the consent item said, motion to approved.
Took the D off.
Oh, yeah, to approve. Okay.
I don't remember anything else. I didn't mark it on my copy.
All right, in that case, I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'm sorry?
She's making a motion to approve.
You're making a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, to approve the minutes from September 8th from the Ojai Planning Commission 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
Sorry, interrupted. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sheri, call or roll, please.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. I walked by the site for item two again today and had no ex parte contacts. Vice Chair Nolan?
I am familiar with the site, and I have had no ex parte contacts.
And Commissioner Lottis?
The same for me. I am familiar with the site, and I've had no ex parte contacts.
Good. And Commissioner Trent?
I am familiar with the site, no ex parte contacts.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. We'll move on to the public hearing item, a comprehensive sign program for 407 West Ojai Avenue. Lucas, if you'll take us through it?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The item actually is going to be presented by Mara McAluso, our associate planner with the city of Ojai. She'll run us through the staff report and the proposal and the recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. The subject property, as noted, is located at 407 Ojai Avenue, and the applicant is requesting approval of a sign program. The subject property is comprised of a multi-tenant, single-story office building. There are three tenant suites in the building. The site currently has a monument sign, as do the office buildings on either side of this property. The applicant is proposing to remove their monument sign and replace it with three wall-mounted signs. No illumination is provided due to the applicant stating that the business is not open during the evening hours. The Ojai municipal code limits the number of onsite signs to two signs per property. However, the municipal code allows for flexibility of this number of signs with Planning Commission approval of these standards with a comprehensive sign program. So therefore, the applicant is proposing a comprehensive sign program to allow three signs on the building. They are unified in size, shape, colors, background, style, and design. They are a uniform extension of the building's architecture and simplicity, as well as colors. And the signs are proposed to be flush-mounted on the front, well, it's the side of the building, but it's front-facing Ojai Avenue. And each sign resembles a business card with routed and painted three-inch-deep lettering, and the lettering is ranging from two to four inches in height, with some lettering as small as .6 inches. There's a correction in the staff report that Chair Quilisi corrected me on regarding that. It's not six inches, it's .6 inches. That was a typo. The colors are proposed to be Benjamin Moore charcoal slate for the background, and then a Benjamin Moore white wisp for the letters. I received a question as to whether the lettering is really visible and readable from passing traffic, and are there any accepted standards within the municipal code? And what I was able to find in the code is for commercial zones that a sign, overall sign size could be larger if the sign, or the building is more than 50 feet from the street, so.
This one is not, I'm sure.
So this one is not. And that wouldn't be for lettering size, but it would be for overall sign size. Lettering size just isn't mentioned at all. I want to note that the applicant, who should be available this evening for questioning, has indicated that the signs, has indicated, excuse me, that the signs have been agreed upon by all three tenants who are family members. And the text of the signs is corporate-regulated and has been approved by the individual corporations. And with that, staff is recommending that the commission approve the signs as presented. And if you have any questions of me or the applicant, I don't see the applicant's name on the board. I'm not sure if that means they're here not.
Yes, I can turn it over.
Okay, thank you.
Allow her in when you're ready.
Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the staff? Go ahead, Chair Nolan.
Yes. So, you know, I see that they're asking for three signs, and the code says two. And then when you look at this sign ordinance and the intent, and I'm not sure if, you know, I didn't find this anywhere, but maybe staff can direct me to something. What was the intention behind the limit of two signs?
I believe the intention is to not overcrowd buildings, frontages with signage. And it looks like Lucas is going to press on his microphone.
Okay. Thank you.
Adding on to that, I would agree that I, when you're physically seeing a building, a building of that size, of that, with that frontage along Ojai Ave, two seems to be appropriate. Three, in this case, does tend to bleed across the entire facade of the building. But that is the reason for the sign program, is to address size, location, design. All those things are on the table when we're looking at that.
Okay.
And you may remember that we had a similar request for the old printing plant building at Blanch and Matilahoff, which was converted to offices, and there are three tenants in there. And there are now three different signs on the building. We handled this, I don't know, two or three years ago, I think. Kathy Nolan?
Yeah.
Remember that?
I remember that.
Yeah.
That sign application.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Lottis?
I just have a, so, they're not showing anything about their, and I know it's not particularly, or I don't think it's called out in the sign code, but where, what type of addressing are they using? Where are the numerals going to be located, and are they visible to the street, and how big are those?
That's a question, actually, that came up before the meeting tonight with Chair Quilisi. And the address numbers are not included as part of this, as part of this application. And they'll have to have lettering, or address numbers on the building, and per the fire code, they'll have to be a minimum of four inches in height and be a contrasting color to the building. But yes, they will be coming off of the, well, with the elimination of the monument sign, there will no longer be an address.
We don't even know where they're going at this point, where the numerals will be placed.
That's correct.
But I seem to recall that compliance with the fire code was part of the conditions of approval.
Yes.
They won't have to come back to the Planning Commission a second time just to put the address on the building?
They will not.
Okay.
Okay.
Or a monument sign out where the current monument sign is that says 407?
Well, they would not have to come back to the Planning Commission for that.
Maybe the applicant can respond.
Chair Quilisi?
Yes, ma'am.
I just happened to be looking on Google Maps and looked up the site. Now, they may have taken this down, because I didn't look today, but they, on the Google Maps, they actually have their address right on one of the wood posts at the front of the building facing Ojai Avenue.
Okay.
It may not be there, and we can ask the applicant, as Commissioner Lottis said, but I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you. I walked by the monument sign this morning, but I wasn't thinking about the address, just the rest of the identification of the building, so I didn't notice that.
Yeah, so, I'm sure they'll be able to.
That's a good question to ask of the applicant. I have some questions that I'd like to raise about the wording of the resolution and such, but I think we can save that for deliberation. Any other commissioners have questions for staff on this? Yes, Commissioner Trent?
Just a quick question. Has it outlined where the signs are actually going to be? Are they going to be staggered in the front?
Oh, I thought there was an illustration.
Yes, there should be.
Yeah. They're lined up between the two windows on the Ojai Avenue-facing side of the building.
Okay.
And that drawing should be to scale, I believe.
Yeah, that's drawing A, attachment C, page one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, cool. Okay.
Still looks hard to read to me, but that's, if that's what the applicant wants, it's not illegal. Any other questions? All right, well, Sheri, let's bring in the applicant and hear from him.
She's there, Cassandra Jones, and she just needs to unmute and go ahead and speak. Cassandra?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak. So, several things. So I can address the numbers on the building. We just had the building painted. I think they finished last weekend, and the new numbers are on order, which is a contrasting color on the pole, exactly where they were before, exactly where you see them on Google Maps. We are interested in maybe in the future doing a monument sign with the numbers on there, but we wanted to get these signs up first, see how it looked, take the old one down, do some landscaping, and think about that once all this is completed. But right now, those numbers on the pole work really well, and we'd like to keep them there for now.
Okay.
And then I wanted to let you know why we're doing this, which is that there is that big, giant monument sign there that is sort of an eyesore. It has been called by some the ugliest sign in Ojai, and we'd like to rectify that. And, you know, it's too large, it's in disrepair, it's hard to see around when you're pulling out of the driveway. It got approved on a whim. I think someone was on maternity leave, or so, I don't know what the story is, but it's time for an update, and we really wanted to simplify and modernize it. And as they said, all the tenants in the building are related. My father, Trent Jones, and my mother, Olga Jones, own the building. My sister is Ojai Physical Therapy. My brother-in-law is Ask Now Investments, along with my father. And then also, my sister works for my mother at Ameriprise on occasion. And then I'm just, I'm just here to help them beautify the building. And so we worked, we've been working for two years to try and find the perfect location for these signs. We originally thought we'd just replace it with another marquee, but, or another monument, but the code has changed since that big sign was put in place. And also, there are so many public utilities on, between the street and the little parking spot that's in front of the building, that there was no other place to put it. And also, there was a proposal for a sidewalk and a new gutter. And we had Fred Ponce come out several times and make measurements for us, and we could not fit a monument sign with all three signs. On the monument sign, we could not figure out in any design way to get them to fit with the allotted space we had. And so we chose to, after literally two years of deliberation, we chose to put them on the building because it was our last resort. And also, where they are located is because a car parks there. It's the handicap spot. So if a car pulls up in that spot, you still need to be able to see the signs. So we hung them at the appropriate level so that you would be able to see them. We have printed out mock-ups and hung them on the building. You can read them driving by. And Ameriprise is the one that is corporate-regulated, so that is their approved sign. And there is some small text on there, specifically for people who are walking by. It's just, that's what's baked into that corporate regulation. So that's not, unless we go back to Ameriprise and negotiate with them, that needs to be there. Let's see, what else? And then also, there, as Maura said, there's no elimination because the businesses are closed in the evening, and there's no walk-ins. So there's never going to be a time when people are just going to come in. It's by appointment only. So those signs are mostly to let people know they're in the right place, that they found the building that they're coming to, not as advertisements. And I think that's everything on my list. Do you have any other questions that I can answer?
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Commissioner Nolan, please.
Yes. Thank you, Cassandra, for sharing that information. I feel like we got a little more information than what was in the staff report. So if I understand you correctly, potentially, a new sidewalk will be going in on Ojai Avenue in front of your building, and how much space was left over?
It was, it was under 50 inches, and the sign could be no higher than three feet.
Okay.
So it would have had to have been three long strips. And then also, there was a, I mean, we, like, we got like a mathematician involved trying to figure out.
I noticed the utilities. I'm worried that you've got a lot going on right there.
There's a lot of utilities there. And so it was, it was not only the height issue, but the bottom sign would have literally had to be touching the ground.
Okay. You mentioned something when you were, you know, opening up. If I understood you correctly, I believe you said that, you know, you wanted to start with, you know, if this gets approved, putting the signs up on the building, but then later you might want to add a monument sign. Did I understand that correctly?
It is a possibility. It's not, we are happy with the numbers on the pole. It has worked really well for us, but that is a possibility, if that is of interest.
Okay, so you were just, if I'm, once again, if I'm understanding you correctly, you were just referring to a sign that had the address, but not a duplicate sign that would have all three.
Correct.
Buildings.
Correct.
That's what you meant by that monument. There may be a post or something closer to the street, possibly.
That just would say 407.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, that answered the question. Let me just see if I had. All right, so now, I think I understand the intent here is basically, you couldn't put a new monument sign in with all three office buildings, or, you know, their names, and that's what drove you to put the signage on the side of the building?
Correct. And we, I really felt like the sign that's there looks like a big, ugly billboard, and we didn't want to just repair it, because it doesn't fit in with Ojai. It doesn't look good.
If you could have just replaced that with a new one, was the only reason you wouldn't do it because you thought, okay, if that sidewalk's going in, we still don't have enough room?
Yeah, they would, they would have taken the, if the sidewalk ever gets approved, they would take it down anyway.
Okay.
We would be right back here.
Yeah, so this is an interesting thing, because there are, you know, up and down the street on both sides, there, well, this, it would only be on one side of the street where the sidewalk would go, but there are other monument signs, so you bring up an interesting question, or possibly conundrum.
It's what I talked to Fred Ponce about a lot.
Yeah.
And he said, you know, they would have to negotiate with the business owners, but our impetus for just taking, thinking about it now was that we don't, we really need to replace the sign, and we don't want to have to revisit it years from now and do something completely different, so we might as well take into account now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Lottis, any questions?
No, I appreciate all the improvements to the building and the care that you're taking, but I think, I think I just have, you know, what I have, I don't really have any questions now. I think I'm just, we'll be ready when we have our commission discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Trent, any questions?
No, none that I can think of. I appreciate the additional context, though. That was, that was great.
Yeah, that was a big help. I did, I did have one, and that was, just as I read the admin report, it said the street-facing building side was 202 square feet. And if that's true, then the allowable sign area is 20.2, not 25.2. And I'm just wondering if the applicant knows what the size of the building, the building face that faces north actually is?
Not off the top of my head. That should be in the application.
Okay. I didn't see it as a big, as a big problem, but if 202 is actually the size of the building, then that's another thing that we would need to consider, because the, oh, 20.2, no. The proposed signage is still less than 20.2. Okay, so, not a problem. If there are no other comments or questions for the applicant, I'll, you're welcome to stay, ma'am, and listen to the deliberation here. But I am going to open the public hearing, ask if there is anyone in the building or outside the building calling in who wishes to speak on this agenda item.
None in the waiting room, and none, no emails.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, come back to commission deliberation. And my question then for my fellow commissioners is, do you have any additional comments that you wish to address to staff or express opinions on the project? Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Yeah, this would be a question for staff. This is in regards to the potential of a sidewalk going in. Would the city have some sort of a release or an agreement with the property owner that, and I'm not even sure if what I'm seeing in, you know, in the front of the building, if that's public right-of-way or their actual property. But if that sidewalk's going in and there now may not be enough room for a monument sign, is there some sort of a release that they would be doing or in agreement with this property owner?
With this property owner that's removing their monument sign, or other property owners that have monuments?
I would just say this one specifically, and it may happen for the other adjacent properties as well, but if that sidewalk is in fact going to go in, is there some sort of a release that says, oh, because the city is going to be putting the sidewalk in, whether or not it's on the public right-of-way or partially on private, or all on private, I'm not sure, but because of that, they would not be allowed, they wouldn't be able to put in the typical monument sign? Not that they would have to keep the one they had, but one that would actually be, you know, mounted on the ground and not on the building. Is there?
It's right next door, Heritage Financial, right next door.
A monuments.
So, yeah, let me just speak to that. I think that's actually a really good question, because that was something we've been thinking about with the ATP project that's, continues to move forward here. And that's really what we're talking about. That's the sidewalk and the improvements that are being discussed at Council Lowell currently. Yes, there has been actually discussion of a legal release, or hold harmless, or something along the lines of if improvements go in, well, when improvements go in in the future, that those signs that are along Ojai Avenue are potentially at jeopardy, in terms of, if they're already currently within the public right-of-way, and we're finding that out through survey, then there would necessarily, there potentially would be a need for an adjustment. The most recent example is actually right next door, where we issued a permit for a replacement for a sign.
403 West Ojai.
Yeah, 403 West Ojai Avenue, where we put together, working with the city attorney's office, a standard, standard language that we would be using moving forward. We could certainly include that here, but that monument sign's being removed in this, in this case. We could add that as a condition of approval, if the commission is so led.
If I may just continue with that thought. So, you know, going out to the Ojai Avenue in that area, looking at this property, and then the adjacent properties, you know, all the signage is predominantly a monument sign on the street, mounted in the ground. You're not seeing signage, business card-like, but large, comprehensive signage on the side of the building. Where I'm going with this is, not that, not that their signs are cluttered, I mean, they're very nicely done, the colors are nicely done, but the fact that you would be having three and only two are allowed, all of a sudden, are we just changing, and I know this is an aesthetic thing, but are we changing the whole aesthetic in that area because not only this property, but the other potential properties that would be impacted, would they all start, be putting these big painted signs, wood signs mounted to the wall of the building? And now we've kind of created something new, something a little bit different from the signage that we have, and you're, you know, now there's kind of, it's not advertising, but the signage is on the buildings, it's a whole different, what's the word I want? It's an aesthetic, but it's also the way you read the sign and where you're looking. And it kind of goes back into the purpose of the sign standard, you know, is it visual clutter, and how does it impact the traffic? And I'm thinking it's different, and how does that affect our small-town character? Anyway, I'm just throwing this out, this is what's just going through my head for consideration with my fellow planning commissioners. It just feels like something to consider on the bigger picture. All right, I'm going to leave it at that for the moment.
Anything you want to say, Maura? Anything you want to say, Mora?
Well, it sounded like comments for the commission to, to take in for the most part, but I, I can say that the municipal code allows for a certain amount of sign area, um, and this applicant isn't exceeding the allowable sign area. However, it's within three signs instead of, you know, one. Um, this, the municipal code also allows for the planning commissioners to approve a sign program or a comprehensive sign program when there are more than three signs proposed, um, and is, I mean, excuse me, more than two. Um, so we're within, we're within the, the umbrella of the, of the municipal code, but the reason you're seeing it also is it, it is a discretionary permit, and, um, and if it weren't fitting in, in the commissioner's opinion with, um, the aesthetics of Ojai and the small-town character and things like that, that's, that's up to you, and that, that's your purview.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Lottis, questions or statements?
Yeah, I, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Nolan articulating those concerns, uh, better articulation of the concerns than I, I was formulating. Um, I mean, it is, it, everything's very neat, I, and I, again, I reiterate, I, I, I think probably the building improvements are going to be very nice, and everything looks great, and it's clean, but, but to me, it looks too much. I, 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 I mean, I'm, I think it's just pushing, i- if we're, if we're even going to talk about wall signs, I think we're, we're kind of really pushing it. Um, and, but then if you make them smaller, then, I don't know, can you see it from the street? I'm, so, the, I, I'm struggling with it a little bit, and I am concerned about the precedent. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, this is, this is along the entryway right into our downtown. Um, I don't know, you know, I guess, uh, a lot of times, you know, a building with multiple tenants is just given a name, and then the tenants have their signs at the entry door. Um, and I'm not, I guess I didn't think to ask the applicant that if they had, how they might think about some option like that. Um, when I'm looking at that elevation, though, I feel like it's, it's, it's just a little much, and, uh, Chair Quillsey, when you mentioned that the correct amount of, uh, building area is two hundred and two, I mean, you're, so no wonder, I mean, it's right up against that limit. Um, so, I don't know, I'm having a, I'm having a little trouble with it, to tell you the truth.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Trent, your thoughts?
Yeah, I was just looking at, uh, at Google Maps, just to kind of get a relationship with the other businesses in the area. Um, and a couple of the next-door neighbors have hanging placards. Um, I know their, their, their frontage is a little different, but they do have some signs that are on the building. They're just, they're hanging placards versus an actual sign. Um, and, and I don't see any other offices along Ojai Avenue in that, in that particular space that would be suitable for signs on the wall. I don't know. I think, I think if we did put signs on the wall in this particular location, I don't know if anybody else would follow suit. Doesn't seem to be something that would be conducive for the other properties. Oh, just, just a thought. It's just the way the building is facing. It's one of the only buildings that's not facing Ojai Avenue.
It's one of the only buildings that was not previously a residence. The one next door at four eleven was not a residence either, but all the ones to the east of it, I think, are converted residences. Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
My thoughts are as follows. Uh, I, it seems to me that, that this building and this mu- and I presume this applicant then had a previous case with the Community Development Department that had to do with replacing doors and windows and repainting the building, which would also require a DRP, I guess, because it's in the commercial zone. Is that correct?
It did not require a DRP. It required a, a director's exemption from, um.
A director's exemption from planning commission review.
Right, so it did require a, um.
It would otherwise have been a DRP, I guess.
Yes.
But I, I thought they did a great job cleaning up the building and making it look nice and fresh. Um, I am, I'm also concerned about the readability of the three signs, but if that's, if that's, uh, if, if they're not sufficiently readable, in my opinion, that's a problem for the applicant, not for me. And they are, they are otherwise within all of the strictures of the code, um, including the total sign area. Uh, and so, my feeling is, actually, I have relatives that live in a lot of small towns or have had over the years, and as I drove through those small towns, I primarily, as I recall at least, saw signage on the buildings rather than monument signs out in front of the buildings. And my personal feeling is that the entry to the city coming, coming east on Ojai Avenue is a lot cleaner if you have signage on the buildings than if you have these monument signs sticking out that, that prevent you from seeing people that are trying to enter onto Ojai Avenue from one or another of the businesses. And so, from that point of view, I would welcome losing the, uh, the monument sign at four oh seven and substituting signage on the building. Um, but that's my personal opinion again. Any, any more? Yes, Commissioner Lottis?
Um, I mean, the only thing that, I mean, it is, it is discretionary for us. I mean, it's a judgment call, you know, we're doing three signs and not two, and, um, so, you know, we're going beyond what the code actually allows, and are we, so, I am a little concerned about precedent here, and, and to be honest, uh, I mean, the, the address is the big thing. Um, and that's why I was asking about where the numerals are going to be, because anybody looking for this building and they've got the appointment, they're gonna be looking just for the number. That needs to be easy to see because somebody driving by, I mean, you can, you're not gonna be, i- it's much more difficult for a person on the street driving in their car to see any, to, to be able to look over and read the sign anyway. And, um, in thinking about this, um, with a nice identifiable, um, building numeral or, uh, address, um, location, um, I, I'm not su- the, the building entrance is actually on the sign. I'm not sure why these signs could not go, um, at the building entrance. That's typically where you would, you'd see your buil- you'd drive up, you find the location of the building based on the numerals, you park, you walk to, you figure out where the front door is, and then you walk to the front door, and that's where you see the, a location of, of the tenants. And, um, I, I think I'm, I'm leaning more in that direction, that that's really, uh, more appropriate, and I, I think we really have to be careful about signage in the city. Signage is a huge aesthetic, uh, and it can be a huge aesthetic impact, and this is right on the main street, right into downtown, um, at the, you know, uh, kind of at the start of our commercial area. Um, so, hmm, uh, uh, anyway.
I understand your point, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, Commissioner Lottis. I'm concerned about setting a precedent, but as I look at this, and I, you know, I understand if the sidewalk goes in and they don't have a place to fit the monument sign, I'm fine with them putting the address back where it was. It's, you know, visible on that same post, so I feel like that, that's been handled. You know, if they decide later to put another additional pole, if there's room closer to the street with the number, you know, that would most likely be okay too. I, I, we don't know what that would look like at this point, but, um, hopefully, yes. But I'm also, I, I, I think aesthetically, the, well, number one, we are exceeding the two signs, if we're looking at three, but because the background of the signs is a shade of black, it really stands out, and it visually looks like a greater mass. I'm not opposed to the actual signage that you did. I think it's very clean and neat. I don't object to that, but I'm wondering if the background on the sign was the same color as the building and the text was maybe black, now it will almost look like, or could almost look like, um, you know, it was routed or it was metal. I mean, not that it's going to be metal, but it'd be kind of, you know, white background with a, with black lettering. It wouldn't be so obtrusive. I'm really concerned about setting a precedent. Truthfully, you know, this, and not just this property, but the other ones, if, if the improvements do go in, it's really gonna cha- potentially change the signage. So to me, I, I guess the other question would be, and this would be for the applicant, does the building have a name or the complex? Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. If it did, that name could be there, and as Commissioner Lottis said, then over each door, each one of these, um, what, each one of the tenants would have their name, or potentially, there could be a smaller sign at the beginning when you first get on the property that would have all three, but you'd have to figure that out and need the code. So to me, it feels like that's an option, and then the second option would be to come back and play with the, almost like reverse the colors so that you're not having such a big visual mass on the side of the building.
Okay.
Question.
As, as I look at the current monument sign, it is a single sign, I mean, it's a single physical piece of material with paint on it, presumably it's plywood or something, and it has three businesses listed. I don't know if that sign predates the municipal code sign standards, so it's grandfathered or what, but I am, I am wondering, I have, I guess I have a question for staff, if instead of these three business card-like signs being spaced across the front of the building, if they were pushed together, would that be considered a single sign then? A single sign of nineteen point nine eight square feet or whatever?
On the building or on the?
On the building.
On the building.
Yeah, if the, if the three, if the three business card appearing objects were pushed together, maybe even made with a single plywood backing, would that be considered a single sign that shows three businesses?
I would say.
Just like the current monument sign?
Right, so it'd be a single background, but it would be three separate signs, and we would measure those out per the sign regulations.
So it would still be three signs?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not a solution. Um, we're back to, we're back to the question of do we allow three signs or not?
Uh, uh, I am interested in, maybe the color is, um, a big part of the, my concern in terms of, uh, the amount of space that it appears to take up. Um, and so I would be willing to explore. That's, that approach is an alternative option, if, I don't know if the applicant could respond to, if, depending on the, how the commission feels, um, but that, that would be my.
I'm sorry?
My comment.
Allow the applicant to speak yet?
I'd love that, yes. Uh, as long as we're asking questions that are appropriate to the applicant, let's, uh, let's have the applicant join the conversation. Do I need, Akil, do I need to reopen the public hearing, or are we simply asking questions of the applicant?
You're simply asking questions of the applicant, so you don't need to reopen the public hearing.
Very good. I prefer not to. Um, so, uh, applicant, I'm sorry, I missed your name again. Cassandra Jones.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, we have, we tried the white background. Again, I, as I said, we print, I printed, I have a, I have my own print shop, and I printed it about a hundred different versions of signs and put them up on the building, and these were the most visible. Um, they, uh, the white blended in, you couldn't see, it didn't, it didn't, it was, it was hard to read. Um, and also Ameriprise is corporate regulated. We cannot change that sign or color. Um, that is their color, uh, that is their design, and we would have to go back to them to negotiate that if we were to change it. And then, as far as, um, putting the, the signs on the side of the, or on the, 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 uh, proper front of the building, as, um, uh, Catherine suggested, um, uh, that, we, we, we discussed that, and, um, that would hurt Ameriprise's business because she really relies on people knowing that that, this exists in Ojai, um, as, less so than Ojai Physical Therapy, but, um, that is really important for her to be visible. Um, and then I also want to say that the alternative, if this does not get approved, then we are probably just gonna repaint the sign that's there, because it's been two years. We have gone through every possible, possible scenario. I have, I have literally gone through reams and reams of paper, printing out possibilities and putting them up on the building and trying to figure out a really elegant, clean solution that looked good and wasn't an eyesore, and, um, this was as close as we got. And so, um, we, that, we have no other choice than just to repaint the billboard, the ugly billboard sign that's there. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Nolan, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Quillsey. Um, so, basically, on all the samples that you did, you're saying that one with black lettering and a white background didn't show up while the black lettering didn't read?
It was not, it was not as readable, no. I mean, it, you know, what, part of the inspiration was from doing that was going, I, I drove all over Ojai, looked at every sign, I, um, and all the signs that have like a dark, you know, the, even the street signs that have a dark, uh, uh, brown background with the white lettering, you can read that from a distance so well. That just stands out, um, even with smaller lettering than what we are proposing, and, uh, and the white lettering just got lost, or the white background, but the black lettering just got lost because those fonts, some of those fonts are very thin. Um, but the dark gray was the best. Uh, the dark gray background with the white lettering was the best. It looked the best of everything.
Uh, Commissioner Nola, or, uh, Lottis, please?
Um, you know, I'm just having, I'm having trouble with the signs taking up that big space of the so- of the building area between the two windows, and, um, you know, if the signs were made a little bit smaller, it almost looks like you could fit them three, uh, horizontal signs, what, below, you know, one, two, three, on the, as I'm looking at the elevation, on the left side of the building.
Um, correct, but.
Any thoughts about that? Because that, to me, that would look a lot better.
And we tried that. It was our first thought, but if a car parks in front of it, you can't see them. That's a driveway there. That's a handicap parking spot.
Yeah.
So, i- if a handicap person comes with their van, the signs are gone.
This is a conundrum.
It is, it has been a huge conundrum, and it is because there's so many utilities on the street that, um, it just limited us so greatly.
Would you be, I mean, how, how have you, how about just, um, reducing the size of the sign, say even by ten, fifteen percent?
That is a possibility, but it's, uh, you know, your concern was, or some of your concerns were readability, and that reduces that.
Yeah, although, I mean, if, if the clients are coming because they all have appointments, I mean, it really isn't.
The one sign is.
Super critical.
Well, the one sign that is advertising is Ameriprise.
Uh-huh.
And so, they suffer for that. The other two businesses, not as much, admittedly, um, but Ameriprise will, will take a small hit on that. Yeah.
Uh, before Commissioner, Commissioner Nolan, I think Commissioner Trent, you had a question?
Yeah, yeah, I was just, I was just thinking of, uh, just options. And I know you've looked at quite a few different options. Um, have you thought about, um, almost like a placard style where it's, it's, um, long and narrow, uh, where the, which would go, similarly match the farmers and, and, um, also the Heritage Financial signs that are on the buildings. Um, you could, you know, put them toward the top and they could be stacked, but they would be longer. You could have them longer and narrower so they could be visible. And even if you had a car parked in front of them, they could, you could make them where they're above the windows. Uh, just curious if you guys have thought of that as sort of a design option?
We did think about that. We tried that option. But again, Ameriprise's sign is corporate regulated. And this is, so we just would have to go back to Ameriprise and negotiate with them. And that's a whole nother, that's another year to do it. So-
Well, I think the, the farmer's sign right next door is, I think that's corporate regulated too.
And I'm sure they, yeah, I'm sure they went and negotiated that.
Yeah.
You know, with-
I was just curious, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea. And it was, it was, I, I definitely explored that.
It, it, but the size isn't actually regulated, is it? I mean, the, the amount of black, the amount of black background?
The, the, the ratio of black is, depending on, you know, that whatever size you want it. No, the, the sign size itself is not regulated, but the design, like how, like what percentage of the sign has to be the background color and what percentage has to be the white strip at the bottom, that is regulated. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Uh, Vice Chair Nolan?
Yeah, I'm, this is kind of a hybrid, I guess, of what we've just been discussing with the, my other two commissioners. But I, I understand we want the letter size to remain the same because we want it to be able to read from the street. Or if somebody parks, they know they're in the right place. Totally get that. And I'm hearing what you, you're saying about the Ameriprise, but I'm wondering, at least on the other two, do you keep the letter size, but you just minimize the top and bottom dimensions on the other, other two? Or could you minimize the, uh, Ameriprise, you have three equal sized signs? And then once again, could you stack them rather than vertically, rather than horizontally? Maybe change the letter size so that it reads?
I did not fi- I could not figure out a way to stack them on that building and still have, still have a car parked in front. I was not able to, I, again, I went through, I mocked it up on, in Photoshop, days and days. I spent mocking it up on every possible scenario, went through every family member, trying to mock up a way to do it. And it just didn't fit.
Yeah, I think you'd have to go up higher than the window height, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's very clean lined. And I, I see what you're saying. Um, yeah.
I, I, I mean, reducing them seems like, um, if that was the, you know, that could help get this through, that is a possibility. But, uh, yeah, it's tr- it's super tricky. I don't, I don't envy your position trying to figure this out as well. It's been a hard, it's been a hard road to figure this one out. And, you know, if we could put a monument, I'd do it in a heartbeat.
Right. I mean, I support your business and I love what you're doing. And I'm, I'm glad that you're upgrading it. And I don't have, you know, any bone to pick about the design of the sign. It's just the fact that it's more than two and the mass that reads based on the background color, you know, pretty much takes up a good portion of that wall. And are we setting a precedent? So-
Right.
I'm hoping what we, we're, we're working with you and trying to come up with a good solution so that you can, yes, have signage and, you know, continue your business. I, I wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Um, yeah.
I get that. I totally get that.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, I, I, I feel, I feel the love. I, I just, it's so hard, it's so hard to communicate what a uphill battle this has been.
Yeah, I-
Because we're dealing with things that are, and we can't move, you know?
So, yeah, I, you know, as I'm looking at this, um, you know, I'm wondering if you, if you could do that. In other words, take off the top and the bottom, maintain the letter size, which you need, and I totally get. And I think the Ameriprise one is the one you may have to find out if you could minimize the sign or modify it, but keep, you know, I understand the logo, et cetera. I guess that kind of ties into maybe our formula business code, right? But, um,
It's a formula business, but not a ban in formula business.
What's that?
I say it's a formula business, but
Yeah.
the code specifically excludes financial services.
That's right.
From any, from any, uh, banning of the formula business being in town.
Right. So, um, yeah, I mean, we, we exhausted the, uh, the option to switch the colors, you know, white or background, black or lettering. But I think the other thing would be, just as I mentioned, could we, could you cut it down and then come back to us? Maybe show a couple of different layouts. But then it, you're basically, you're minimizing the overall square footage. Is kind of, I think where we're going and minimizing, not that I don't like charcoal and black, I do. I love, I use them a lot. I love those, you know, using that. Um, and it's definitely works as a great accent. But I think it's just the massive aesthetic that you pick up from a dark color.
Well, the, the sum of the three signs is, is less than ten percent of that face of the building, which then complies with the code.
I understand that, but I think you see-
Yes, there's a lot of, there's a lot of charcoal area on the left and right signs, let's call it, the Ameriprise being in the center. Uh, but if you take away that charcoal, then you have three signs that are different shapes. And I'm not sure if that's better aesthetically. If they're stacked, I don't know that you can get three of them vertically.
We'd have to try it and-
Still keep it above the cars.
Yeah. Well, I believe you know the bottom line as far as the visibility, like the top of the cars is essentially the bottom of the, of the third sign and how high you would have to go up and how that would work in relationship to the top of the windows. Because I can tell, you know, you thought, thought we laid this out. Um, so I think it'd be a little bit of manip-, you know, trying some manipulation, but, you know, maybe it's like a small, a smaller sign than the Ameri- Ameriprise and then a smaller one under it. But the lettering is consistent. The colors are consistent. So we're kind of keeping, you know, with what you did, but making it less obtrusive.
I have a question for staff along that line.
Did I understand what I was saying? Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the idea.
Oh, let me just do a-
Well, I, I think what she's talking about, ma'am, is making the real estate and the physical therapy signs maintaining their width, but making them smaller, top to bottom, and stacking them in any way that you'd care to, above or below the Ameriprise sign. Uh, one thing to consider here is that you have three businesses in the building. And I think one of the, probably one of the things that the applicant was trying to achieve is to give each of the buildings the same size sign.
Yeah, I can tell you right now that the, um-
Is to make two small signs and a big sign, if you will.
And I think that would be beautiful, but I can tell you that, uh, uh, Ask Now Investment, the owner of Ask Now Investment, my brother-in-law, won't go for it. He is really, he really wants to have equal billing on the building. It's really important to him. Um, and that has been a huge point of contention. I tried to do a smaller, I tried to do it where the Ameriprise sign was bigger in the middle and the two were smaller on the side. Yeah, and, um, that was a, that was a whole month trying to convince them. And, and so, again, we're in a conundrum. And unfortunately, if we, you know, if I can't come up with something that appeases everyone in the family, we're just gonna go get the old sign repainted. Because it's, um, it's been two, it's been two years of a lot of, a, a lot of, a lot of work of trying all these different ideas. And, um, I'm, I'm tired. And I, you know, I did this, I did all of this, um, well, I won't go into that. But I, I, I just, um, you know, if, if a solution is just to make them all a little smaller, so there's a little bit of room, that is a possibility. But, um, I ca- I, I know that it will be a no to reduce the sign size. Um, and I don't think that his logo will fit on a sign like how you drew it. Um, I know that logo so well at this point. And I know that it won't fit in a, in a, in a scenario like that.
Yeah, you know, I, I, because I'm sitting here looking at your elevation. And, I mean, if you use the real estate sign and kept, once again, all the lettering stays the same, and I'm not talking about changing it, the size or moving it around. But if you use that as your template and the text on the physical therapy, it looks like it's smaller. But if you use that same template and brought it over, they, those two could be the same size. I'm just minimizing the background, but not the actual read of the, the name of the bill, of the, uh, business.
Um, do you mean smaller on either side? Can you make a drawing of what you're, with that scenario it looks like?
Yeah, let me, all I'm, let me see if I can. Can we do screen share?
I know. I wish I could just show you all my Photoshop files that, I mean-
I'm just kidding, yeah. You know what?
It sounds to me like the building owner is not agreeable to making the three signs different sizes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, I'm just talking about the background, but let me ask, um, staff a question and please, you know, just let me know right or wrong. In the past, we, years ago, we have, we had cla- uh, applicants come in for, whether it was architecture or a sign, something where we were kind of in this situation where we weren't coming to, uh, an agreement. And, um, we met with, staff allowed at the time, two commissioners, maybe it would be different, to meet at City Hall with staff and for the applicant to come in with what they have. So maybe we can help work it out. I don't know if that's out of line or not appropriate. You can let me know, but-
It's less than a quorum of the commission, so it's not illegal.
No Brown Act issues, yeah. Um, and maybe it's not appropriate and you can just say, no, we can't do that. I, I'm just, I know it's kind of hard to like show something up with an idea, but, um, and I'm trying to keep it very simple and clean. And I appreciate the signage that you've done. That's not the issue. But, um, I, I guess staff, could you respond to that?
Love to. So, in terms of what you're talking about, it sounds like almost an ad hoc where there wouldn't be a decision made, correct me if I'm wrong here, regarding this matter. Instead, it would be tabled while two members that would be chosen by the commission to, to have a discussion off-table with the applicant. Staff would obviously be present. And then take that discussion back to the full commission at a later date, correct?
Correct. If the applicant was even interested, I mean,
That's, and I think that's, that's the key here, is if the applicant is interested in doing that.
I, I have a question, a related question, I think, for staff. Is the current monument sign on this parcel legal non-conforming because it's been there a long time? Or is it considered a single sign? Or is it considered three signs?
No, it's considered a single sign. It allows for those types of signs with that V kind of, um, format that you're seeing there. In terms of the size, I'm not sure if-
Single sign on the side of the building that had all three images on it, that would not be a single sign.
No, it would be, they would be measured out differently. Monument signs are measured differently than how you would measure, uh, wall signs.
I see, okay. Well, commissioners, we, we do have, I have some questions about wording of the resolution. But I think we need to get the principals involved here sorted out. And my questions about the resolution, which are just in the spirit of making sure that because it's a legal document, everything is letter perfect, uh, can come as part of a discussion of the motion to approve or not approve the applicant's request. What do you all think? Anyone?
Well, I, I think I would, I mean, I, I don't think I can support this. Uh, if there's any way we could have, um, either staff or two commissioners, um, try to work something out with the, with the applicant. I mean, you know, if the, if the letters are maintained to be equal, but the amount of background varies, uh, I mean, that, that just seems to me like, um, kind of a, a win-win solution. So, I'm willing to try to work something out, but I don't think I can support this.
Okay, uh, comments, Commissioner Trent?
Um, I am not opposed to it. I, I, I think it's better than the sign that's currently there. I think they've done a good job trying to make it as, uh, to fit in as much as we can. Um, and I think it would be, it would be a nice addition to the building. So I'm, I'm not opposed to it. We do have a, another, you know, couple of other locations where there's three signs on a building, such as, um, you know, the Automotive Supply, Ojai Beverage Company and the, you know, the wine tasting sign over there. And that's all on one building. So there's, there's other areas in town where there's three signs on a building. Um, and across the street, the Shin Tigo, um, you know, they've got, uh, a sign in the front, and then they also have a, you know, the sign on the building itself, which is pretty large. So I don't think it would be out of character for Ojai to have signs on the wall.
I guess Azu and the Topa Brewery both just have two businesses, signage on their buildings. Azu, I think, has just two-
You're talking about the corner of Montgomery and Ojai?
By the way, that place looks empty to me. Have they moved on?
Who?
Azu?
Yes, it's been-
Yeah, I think, change of ownership and I think they're closed for a while.
Oh, okay. Renovations, yes.
All right, well.
But some of that signage that, um, you're referencing might be non-conforming. I'm just not, I mean, I don't know when it was approved or-
Yeah, that was my question about the existing monument sign. But if the rules for monument signs are different for on-building signage, then we'd have to go back into all of those details to figure out if there's something better to try to do here.
Okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Either to approve this project with whatever changes we want to make to it, or to delay it with some additional discussion with the applicant? I, I think we need to come to some sort of a decision tonight, even if it's a decision that is not a final decision on any particular design. So, Vice Chair Nolan?
I'll make a motion that we, not, I'm trying to think of formally, but we'd be continuing the item. But that the commission, um, meet with staff and the applicant, you know, not, uh, according to the Brown Act, and not come to an conclusion, but look at some possible options. And then bring it back to the commission. We would not be making a decision at that point. I'm sorry, that's a long. Description there, but-
If we, if we continue, if we continue the item to a date certain, at least the city doesn't have to renotice all of the parcel owners within a certain distance of this parcel.
So, uh, commissioners, if I could make a suggestion here, um, it seems like the, the commission wants additional information or additional time or additional information to consider here. And so I would recommend, um, that this item be brought back, uh, this item be continued and be brought back for a date certain. So like Steve said, no, you don't have to renotice anything. But then with a specific instruction, um, that the, you know, whatever you guys want to see changed or, or even an instruction to staff to, to, um, to revise the conditions of approval, or however you so choose to handle that one.
Okay.
I wonder if we need, uh, I know, I know I just made a motion and maybe I'll retract my motion if I can. I'm wondering if we need to go back into the conditions of approval and then look at the, those items that may need to be addressed. Does that seem more appropriate? Does that seem more appropriate, Nikhil?
Yeah, that could, that could work. I mean, I, I'm well, Commissioner Lottis, I think you had something?
Yeah, I'd rather give specific direction. I think that's cleaner and let the applicant make some modifications and come back. And so I like what you, can you restate for, I'll make a motion to continue to
Don't make it October 6th. We're going to be here all night with that already.
I know, whatever the next day, whatever the next.
It will be October 20th.
October 20th. If Commissioner Nolan, can you restate about the, so we maintain, so that the signs would maintain the letter size and the two signs, other than the American Enterprise sign, would be made smaller and, and the arrangement, a, a, an aesthetic arrangement would be presented with the two smaller signs.
Minimize the massing.
Right. And only changing the
Background.
Backgrounds, nice.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion? Let me see if I understand. The motion is to alter the conditions of approval in some fashion such that the AmeriPrize sign is larger than the other two, maintaining, otherwise maintaining letter size and colors of the signs. Is that about right? Such that the totality of the area of the three signs is less than currently proposed?
And consider vertical stacking.
And consider vertical stacking. Okay. All right, and that's been seconded. I'll call the question then. Sherry?
Chair Quilisi?
Uh, no.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
I'm gonna retract. I didn't know that there were so many conditions. So I'll say a no on that.
Okay. So that motion fails two to two. Is there another motion appropriate from a commissioner? I know that
Kathy, Kathy, I liked your first suggestion.
Started by, I thought, I thought she was going to make a motion to have a meeting of two commissioners with the applicant and come back at a date certain to see if there's any wiggle room between what is there now and what might be perceived as as less obtrusive by whichever two commissioners wound up having discussions with the applicant. Is that about right?
Pretty darn close.
Yeah, that's where I was going towards as well.
Okay, so would it be appropriate for me to make another?
It's, it's appropriate to make another motion because the first one failed and, and I feel that we should come to some sort of decision tonight, even if it's decision to, in effect, kick the can down the road for six weeks, but work on the problem in that time.
Right, I make, I'll make a motion that we continue to the item to, what did we say? That was October?
20th.
20th, 2021. And offer the applicant to meet with staff and to selected commissioners to review the graphics, to try to minimize the graphics and offer solutions. We would not come up with a solution, but offer suggestions. And then the applicant would return with, you know, hopefully a new solution. But we would be minimizing the background and promoting vertical stacking as opposed to horizontal.
And part of your motion, I think, probably should include which two commissioners need to meet with the applicant?
Correct. And I think as a commission, we, right now, I mean, I guess we would have to decide what feels or seems appropriate.
Just, before we do though, two commissioners meeting with the applicant.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, with staff. I just want to caution that, you know, that this is not, you have two commissioners, you have half the commission meeting with the staff. If it's one-on-one individual meetings with staff, each commissioner, but I'm worried about the, I'm concerned about the Brown issue here.
I'm fine with that. Okay, good. I mean, I know earlier I kept saying, you know, we didn't want to violate the Brown Act, so I, I appreciate and I agree with
What's less than a quorum because it's less than a majority?
So Nikhil, are you talking about one commissioner meeting one-on-one with, with the applicant and staff? Is that what you're saying? There would be less of a?
Otherwise, you're doing a serial meeting. And if you're concerned about two commissioners, serial meetings of two commissioners is just as bad as two at the same meeting, right?
That's, that's true. And so my concern really is, is that meeting with commissioners, meeting with the applicant and staff, perhaps that, I mean, it seems, my recommendation would be this, a motion that that the applicant present alternate designs based on the comments at this, comments by commissioners at this meeting and those designs be considered and incorporated into the, and incorporated in the conditions of approval at the next meeting where this matter is continued. And that the commission as a whole evaluate those alternative designs at that meeting.
Okay, that's similar to Commissioner Lottis's.
Yeah, I, I.
Actually, but which is, I'm, I'm fine with. Yeah, I want to make sure we're not violating the Brown Act.
Yeah.
Here, absolutely.
I think there's a way of narrowing this kind of, because the issue really is, is that the commission wants to see alternatives to what's been proposed.
Correct.
And so the, if, if the matter is to continue the matter so that the applicant may, may propose alternate design, may, the, continue the matters that the staff and the applicant may work on alternative designs to be presented to the commission at the next meeting and for the commission to consider and potentially approve an alternate design.
And eliminate any discussion of individual commissioners with the applicant is what you're saying?
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
Do I have to say that over again or can we use that?
You can, you can just use that, you can.
Do you want to add some, some additional language, Kathy? Or are you?
I think Nikhil's saying that for the applicant to take into consideration the comments that we've made. And I think we've been pretty clear on, on that. So I, I feel good with that motion.
And that, and I wouldn't say that, you know, if you, so that, I'll repeat back the motion so that, and then you can, yeah, so that everyone's on the same page here. And so the motion, the, the motion would be for the, for the matter to be continued to the, not the next meeting, but
October 20th.
Planning Commission meetings, regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting of October 20th, 2021. And for the, for the applicant to present alternative designs to the, as part of the comprehensive sign program, and the applicant to work with staff in addressing the concerns of the commission. And for the staff, and for the commission to consider and evaluate and potentially approve an alternate design at the next meeting. So that's the motion.
Agreed.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
And this motion is being proposed by Commissioner Nolan, just.
Correct.
By Nolan and seconded by Lottis. Any discussion of that motion? Okay, I have to say, I, I feel uncomfortable with it. I, I am sensitive to the concerns of my fellow commissioners. But I feel like we're at a point where the, the applicant has come forward with a rock of sorts and the commission is saying the rock isn't shiny enough yet. Go away and polish it some more. It's going to be a very subjective decision that comes either now or six weeks from now, five weeks from now, whatever it is. And I, I feel from the discussion that we've had with the applicant that, that we've seen the boundaries of, of what is acceptable to the parcel owner, the building owner. And one of those is that the three business card-like signs be the same size. I'm not sure how you can square that with the desires here to minimize the charcoal background of two of the signs. And, and for that reason, I don't feel like I can support this. But again, that's one, one opinion out of four. Commissioner Trent, anything from you on this?
Um, I, I mean, I, I'm agreeing with you. I feel, in my opinion, I feel it's fine the way it is. I think we are basically saying the rock is not shiny enough or it needs to be a different color or whatever that might be. So I think it's very, whatever we decide will be subjective. However, I, I do want to support my fellow commissioners and I feel like maybe there will be some middle ground that can come from an additional meeting with staff to try to help provide some some guidance for the client, for the applicant. So I, I'm, I'm, I'll attend to side with the motion and go that way.
Okay.
Some more time on this one.
Very good. Anyone want to call the question? If not, I will. Sherry, let's call the roll.
Quilisi?
No.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Very good. Ms. Jones, I think you, you see the sense of the commission now. And let's see what we can do in five weeks or so.
I will likely not be the applicant anymore after this. I won't be around on October 20th. I have a, where I've, my husband is a touring musician. I'm supposed to be on tour with him. And I have, I was between a rock and a hard place before this and you put up a brick wall. So I, I have tried all of your suggestions before. I have spoken with all of the, I have fought long and hard with all of the tenants. And I know that a smaller sign for Ask Now Investments is not going to fly. I know that the stacking doesn't work. I know that the, I mean, the only other suggestion I can think is maybe we change the color or we just have to go hire another designer to scrap the entire thing and start all over.
That's not going to happen.
And so we are sitting, we've been sitting here discussing and we're probably just going to repaint the sign.
Let it go.
We are, this is, this is just too hard. It's too hard. I really, I started this project, I volunteered for this project because I love Ojai and the sign is an eyesore to me. And I wanted to beautify that space and I have failed. And I'm sorry that it didn't meet your expectations.
A question for staff. If, if they just repaint the existing monument sign in the existing colors, is there any permission they need from the city to do that?
It's just a sign permit. Handle it at staff level.
Okay. Well. Did we call, did we call the roll on that one? We did. It's three to one. Okay. Very good. So you, ma'am, you have, you have the commission's decision?
I will speak with the family and see if anyone else has any ideas, but the owner of the building is sitting right here and he's giving me a big, where he wants to let it go.
Absolutely impossible.
It's just, and when the sidewalk goes in, we'll just, I don't know what we'll do. So I thank you all for your time.
I think I heard absolutely not in the background there.
Yeah, I'm really sad about that.
Well, there we are, ladies and gentlemen. Let's move on to item three of the agenda. Recommendation is to continue the director's exemption and modification to minor conditional use permit regarding the property formerly occupied by Jersey Mike's.
Correct.
And the recommendation from staff is to continue this to a date certain of October 6th. To allow time for staff to work with the applicants regarding new information and other matters.
Yep, and we are currently working with the applicant to resolve those, those issues that have arisen.
Okay, and we do need a vote on continuing the item, I presume.
Staff is recommending October 6th, but I know it is a bit, little bit of a logjam here in terms of some of the bigger items we've got coming up on the 6th. I would say this is a much smaller log in terms of the items that you're seeing on the 6th.
Right.
So just take, take that in consideration.
Okay. Thoughts by fellow commissioners, Vice Chair Nolan, please?
I was going to make a motion unless there's any discussion. I mean, I mean, we're not supposed to be discussing it anyway, but.
Do we need to open a public hearing or anything of that sort? Oh, this is a discussion item, right? No, it's a public hearing item.
Well, it's a public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing, but we're continuing at dates specific or dates certain, so.
Okay.
So we can do that without opening the public hearing and closing?
However, if the commission feels, if there's, if there's people out in the audience for this item, well, obviously there's no one here, but I'm saying in the virtual world, then we, we could open it up to give them the opportunity to speak.
But no one's here, so could we have a motion to continue this item to October 6th?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we continue director's exemption DE 21-012 and modification to minor conditional use permit CUP 06-03 AMD to October 6th, 2021.
Second.
Second, thank you very much. Discussion, I, I have a question. What is 0603 AMD? That's amended?
I thought it might be amended.
Yes, it's an amendment. Amendment to a previously approved conditional use permit.
Minor conditional use permit.
Excuse me, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Then let's call the question, Sherry.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Very good. Discussion item number four, general plan update, land use element. Let's roll up the big gun here, Lucas, and talk to us.
I'm going to share my screen here because we've got a couple things that that I want to go through first. One thing that I want to go through first, and that's kind of the progress flow chart. I know we've seen it before, but I want to kind of go through it again. Let me just share my screen. All right, can everybody see that? All right, so tonight, it's the general plan update, general plan, land use element policies discussion. Before we go into that, I kind of want to go through the progress flow chart. I think this is important for us to see anytime that we're kind of going into either elements or just kind of a topical piece or whether we're diving into, to some details here, we're getting into the weeds, that we go back and, and see where we've come from, see where we're at, and then kind of see where we're going. And this, I think this, this flow chart kind of shows, and we've seen this before. But I think it's a good reminder of where, where we've been, where we're at currently, which is the highlighted area in the dotted red. And then where we're going. You know, the listening and learning is really what started this whole process off, the surveys. The. the information that the consultant was gathering at that time. And that kind of blooded in from the end of September through December into January a little bit. And then the visioning, that then drove the visioning that we had just recently wrapped up with city council approving that vision and guiding principles statement and the information that supported that. And now we're at the plan alternatives, where it's a create and refine land use and transportation alternatives. So they're currently working on that, but that is also going to initiate a workshop that will be coming up here, probably within the next month is what we're looking at here. We're trying to nail down a date currently. So it truly is in the fall. That's what we're looking at right now. We're leaning into the fall currently. Moving forward into that would be the policy and plan development. That's the development policy to implement the vision and assess potential environmental impacts. I will have to confess that the land use element policies that we're looking at tonight, it's really meant to be kind of an overview cursory. It's getting the commission and saying, "Look, commission, take a look at these. Start thinking about them ahead of, in terms of where we're going into the future." 'Cause with this next workshop that we're gonna be having in the future for the plan alternatives, that's then going to lead us into this policy and plan development, which will be another workshop that we'll end up having as well. And then the review and adopt is the, is kinda that final finite piece where it takes all of those pieces, molds it together into a draft revised or updated document. So it's, I think it's important to know that the plan alternatives are currently being worked on, and the workshops that, well, the workshop that we've had up to this point, and the future workshop that we're gonna have will help to frame the alternatives. The policy document itself is a little bit ahead of this, ahead of schedule, but I think it was, it's important tonight for the commission to be aware of these policies. I mean, this is really one element, but just know that the idea is to, is to kinda bring to the forefront and start having the commission and even the community start thinking about these policies. I know I've heard the commission speak on many occasions about the policies really kinda guide the community in terms of the future. That's, that is absolutely true. It is, it really is the foundation to a certain degree in terms of how, I mean, when you think about it, a lot of our projects use these policy document, or these policy statements to frame whether or not a project is correct or right for the community. So with that, I attached all of the goals and policies that are currently in the land use element itself. I'm not looking for us to go through them individually tonight. It's really meant for a refresher for this, for this commission to look at each of these policies and start thinking about each of these policies, their impacts in the past, current, and even into the future. And even some, maybe some policies out there that are missing. Maybe there's some holes in what we're looking at here. Maybe it's a bit of a Swiss cheese that's happened over the last 20 years. So let's take a look at that as well. So it's, it's really kind of more of a introduction in terms of what we're looking at here, and not necessarily a deep dive at this point. But I wanted to get this commission thinking about this in the months to come. And that'll be true for not only this element, but for the other elements as well. I've kinda narrowed in the land use element, but to be quite honest, all of the policies throughout the entire document are equally important, so... With that, is there any questions for the commission at this point?
If we're to look at this and think about it and not get down into the weeds, is there some intermediate ground that we might call throwing up some ideas that doesn't get specific enough to be getting down into the weeds?
Yeah, I don't want us to go into each of these, each of these policy statements and starting to redline. But yeah, I would say if we're thinking at the 20,000-foot level, the 10,000-foot level would be, "What about this idea? Or what about this concept? Are we covering this?" I think those, that's absolutely something that we can start thinking about. And I think that's, I think that's important to help frame the way in which this, this will guide us through, through the rest of this process.
Okay. Vice Chair Nolan, would you like to start this discussion?
No, not, I'm gonna pass.
I'll say something.
Okay, Commissioner Nolan?
Normally, I jump right in, but I...
Yeah, I completely agree with you, Lucas, and I think that I know for myself, I would like to touch on a few areas. But yeah, so I think if we think of it as, if any of us have topics of interest or concern, just general issue topics, I think that would be a really good place to just kind of start and say, you know, we could go around and just talk at that level, the issue level. And then later we'll, and by the way, I really appreciated providing the, providing us with the list of policies from the land use element. And thank you so much for that. And so that would just be what I would advise the commission, or suggest that the commission do tonight.
And we're gonna go through something similar for circulation and safety and environmental justice?
Well, I'm thinking of topics that actually belong in the land use element. I mean, I can, I can start out if you'd like me to. I'll try not to be too lengthy.
Go ahead.
So let me see here. I do have a lot of, I did actually go through the policies, and I did, was making notice of changes or, and/or emissions, omissions. In terms of the staff report, we talked about Bryant Street, and I do, I do remember from the the first public workshop that we had, which I forget what it was called. And I do remember a number of people talking about the Bryant Street area and talking about it as being interested. You know, I just, I'm gonna reiterate. So I'm gonna reiterate once again, I mean, my, my concern with this area is that we really need to actually probably have stronger language than we currently do about protecting this area, industrial designated area. We don't have much of it. We need to really preserve it for the future. We need to encourage, you know, a place for entrepreneurial startups to find a place to do their business. And I'd like to see further policy language about that, and maybe, you know, things that really are specific to Ojai, encouraging those kinds of uses, maybe broadening it to art studios or handcraft industries, something of that sort that's really kind of bubbles up from the community that's already here and the enterprises that exist now. So, let me see, I made a lot of notes. I'm probably not, and I will try, but... One second, one second here. So I, I think we need language that says we will not be giving over commercial manufacturing designated land to, for things, uses such as hotel, taproom, entertainment uses. I think that's just a really bad idea. And we're potentially missing out on opportunity to build industry that will actually employ a lot of people, where we can really create jobs. And jobs at maybe all levels, blue collar jobs to perhaps professional jobs, just any, you know, a whole range. And that's what I think we need to really, really protect and just allow for that opportunity into the future. So that's, that's one. Another topic is trees. I think we need a heck of a lot more policy on trees. We have one policy, preservation of existing mature trees in place. By the way, we're not even doing that, so... But we need to talk about replacement of trees. We need to talk about just a lot more ways to, that we're gonna protect the trees, and that that policy language would then be translated into the tree ordinance changes. We do talk a lot about preserving the character and the feel of the residential area, and I like that. I like the diversity of, a mix of types of residential dwellings, from apartments to single-family homes that's in there already. I do think we need, we're going to need to talk about addressing the future problem of too many cars per household, especially with the allowance of ADUs that don't really require parking. I think that we may need to talk about to prevent the car loading onto streets and just basically really changing the character of many neighborhoods, many of our residential neighborhoods. We may need to talk about maximum number of cars per household. Radical as that sounds, a lot of communities already do that. Let's see. I think we need to think about what climate-related policies might belong in this section on land use, such as, we could, you know, think, I'm trying, I'm thinking creatively and looking ahead here, but perhaps something like limit new commercial development to Leeds Platinum. We need to talk about conservation of resources with any new development and the whole gamut of that, what that means. I think we need to, well, that's, we, also working in here, conservation of water resources probably belongs, can also work into this section. There's a little bit of crossover, since we're not doing, dealing with the, or apparently we're not talking about the conservation element. You know, it may end up being that some policies that might better fit in conservation are gonna end up in the land use, because they're related to land uses anyway. So let me just take one more gander at my comments here. I think we need to talk about uses in the downtown and better articulate in more detail about a balance of residence-serving and versus tourist-relating uses, or, you know, and a lot of times there's overlap, but sometimes it's more heavily related to tourist-serving uses in the downtown, especially as I see the downtown now and kind of the way we're going. I need, so also a diversity of use, commercial uses in the downtown, not overloaded with just one kind of use. I think we're heading, maybe heading toward really heavily, heavy on the restaurant bar, alcohol-serving kind of use. And I think we need to be, we need to think about the future, and we need to really be careful about talking about a balance that we want. And we wanna keep the downtown for residents. Just not, you know, completely dominated with tourist-serving industry. And we can talk about that more than we do. In fact, we don't really, we're not, there's a little bit of language in there, but not enough, in my opinion. And so I think that's it. I think I have three big issues. Preservation of land for industrial entrepreneurial uses. Downtown commercial, maintaining a balance of the types of uses we want to see. And I think we also needed to talk about the kinds of, the permitted uses we wanna see in the commercial zones and kind of, we have already done that informally at the commission level, but I think it needs to appear in the policies. Reevaluate the suitability of permitted uses. We may have uses we need to require CUPs for, such as hotels, in my opinion. And then the third big, big issue is the trees. We need, we really need a lot more policy language on tree protection and preservation and replacement. That's it, in a nutshell.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Okay. So I agree with many of the things that Commissioner Lottis said, but I, a couple of things that I just wanted to emphasize was we have this discussion about, or consideration of North Montgomery Street, which is the properties that are now zoned as general commercial. Many of them already have existing residences on them, and...
Legal law conforming as a result.
Yeah, legal law conforming. So I really, really encourage us to not only look at North Montgomery, which I think should happen, you know, sooner than later, but to generally look at our commercial zoning. And maybe it's not all of it, maybe it's not appropriate everywhere. Where appropriate, could it be rezoned or have some additional overlay? Where we're encouraging, even though I know it's land use, but live-work opportunities. And that's what we would actually be doing with this Montgomery one, as a matter of fact. But that then also ties into land use with transportation. It ties into ADUs having another car, or... I'm not so sure that I wanna regulate how many cars people can have. But at the same time, if we, in our land use and other elements, create the opportunity for like alternate transportation, like we're doing with the ATP project, where people can get around without having to either drive their car or even have a car, that would be, you know, contribute to alleviating parking issues, traffic, and even air quality. I know we talked about this at our joint meeting. Definitely yes for the trees. I know that city council had looked at the, our community forest management plan. I know that it needs to be updated. Yes, this needs to happen. And just due to the drought and climate, we are losing a lot of trees. And that, the more we lose, that affects our climate. It makes it hotter, essentially. We'll go into the science of it, but for tonight's sake, that definitely, I'm definitely pro for that. And those will be the two that I looked at a lot, wanted to share.
Okay. Commissioner Trent? Thoughts about general things that should be considered as we go through the land use element?
Yeah, I think for sure we need to bring in the climate aspect and conservation of water, fire mitigation practices on anything that's, you know, regarding any sort of development. And I think that there is a call-out for that in the current land use. There's a section for it, and I believe it's maintaining compatibility between Ojai's Built-in Natural Environment, LU 13. I think that we can expand on some of that language that's in there. And then I, I do like the idea of village mixed use, particularly on the North Montgomery area. And I'm not opposed to it on Bryant Street either. I would be curious to ask staff if they know how many vacant areas we have over there on Bryant Street, particularly in the back section. I'm just curious. I don't know if it's...
I don't have a number offhand, but I can, I can certainly look into that and report back.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know how, how much, you know, occupancy is there, and if there's room for expansion with village mixed use. I think that could help with some of the housing issues that we're faced with and can expand or allow for some flexibility there. I like village mixed use in general, especially, like I said, on North Montgomery. I think it adds to the walkability of the town. I think it would create more of that unique flair that we lack. I think it would create more of that, um, unique flair that we like it so much in, in Ojai because the areas that are currently village mixed use are very eclectic. Um, so I think it would add to that, you know, kind of environment and culture in Ojai. Um, but I do agree with my other, my fellow commissioners. We need to definitely call out more of the climate impacts as it relates to conservation of water, fire mitigation. Um, you know, those, those particular callouts need to be in here and made very, very strong. So I think we're at a point where we can't really tiptoe around the subject anymore.
And I'm sure that Commissioner Trent, being in the insurance business of a sort, is certainly aware of it, but there's a lot of policies no longer being renewed because of the fire hazard danger here in town now. I've heard from people myself who have said, "My policy was not renewed. I've talked to everybody that I can find and I can't get anyone to write me a new policy, a new fire policy on my house."
Yeah, it's very real.
I think that, that, uh, the city needs to work with our water purveyor, which in this case is Casitas by and large. There are, uh, a number of other water purveyors in the valley, but Casitas is the big dog. And see if there are ways that we can bring the availability of water for fire suppression up to a level where it's no longer an inhibition on developing any particular parcel or insuring any particular parcel in the city. Because I think if, if we allow this condition to persist, that we will see development here in the city of any sort stifled and it won't matter what, what we do in terms of flexibility of zoning. While I completely agree that we need more flexibility in zoning and we've talked about, for example, allowing residential use in, in the commercial zone in the East End, I think that's a good idea. Um, but we won't see development of any sort. We won't see any new businesses moving into the Bryant Avenue or Bryant Road, Bryant Street, or Bryant Circle areas if we cannot protect the people who exist here in business from the, the fire dangers that we know are very real, having, uh, having dodged a serious bullet four years ago with the Thomas Fire. I think that's something that we need to work on very heavily and we need to better explain the city's policy about making the city fire safe. And to whatever ends we can, we can talk about land use that will contribute to that. I think it's, I think it's very important. I agree that, that there are some areas of flexibility, like North Montgomery Street, that, that the commission ought to consider and recommend to City Council much sooner rather than later. I'm not sure what the timeline is for getting through the land use element of the general plan, but, um, I think we're going to reach a crisis point with some of the people on North Montgomery that we don't know about right now. Um, and it should be within our power to do something about that before we reach a And I had it in my head to say, I want to follow along with the last point that Commissioner Lottis made, but she made three or four, and I can't remember which one was the last one now.
Uh, trees?
Oh, uh, you were talking, you were talking about car loading.
Okay.
And here we are back to, back to the, the state taking away local discretion about automobiles with the new laws about ADUs. I don't think that we, that, that it is, or barring some serious litigation, will be within the power of the city to say, "If several of your neighbors put in ADUs, then you can no longer have as many cars as you currently have." And I could see the philosophy headed that direction. And I, I would be very leery of, of trying anything like that.
It wasn't really, I, that's not what I was talking about because we are regulated by the state. But, um, in our neighborhood, I, I mean, we are, we are an early impacted neighborhood with, um, uh, one particular house that has, probably has, I don't know, anywhere from eight to 10 vehicles all the time and, um, that they work, that half the vehicles are being worked on, um, and then an ADU and, um, across the street. So I, I'm just looking at the, the next 10 years or more with ADUs and, uh, uh, I, cities can regulate the maximum number of cars per household. It's not, it's not, it's not saying, it's not requiring onsite parking, but it would be potentially as a parking permit system and you can, and you can do it. Other cities do it. Uh, it's just, I'm not saying we have to. I would just, I was throwing out it out there and I don't want to be, I don't, that's going into the weeds and I don't want to do that tonight, but, um, it's, it's, it's an example of some of the things that you could talk about, um, as, as, as part of policy language.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, this isn't meant to be a debate tonight. I think we're, we're looking for ideas here and we'll ground some of those ideas and, and mold some of those ideas and come back with, um, some additional information, so.
Okay. Well, I, I certainly have to agree with my fellow commissioners that, that additional flexibility in zoning, uh, even to the point of, of what it would really amount to is installing as a matter of policy, additional permitted uses in some zoning districts that are not currently there. I think that's an excellent idea. I think that, that we have, uh, and I would ask a question of staff, is VMU a, a base zoning, like residential or commercial, or is it an overlay?
No, it's a base zone.
It's a base zone, okay. Uh, then, then it being the most flexible base zone that we have, I think I'm agreeing with, with, uh, Commissioner Trent that we need to look at expanding that, or we need to look at modifying other basic zoning districts restrictions or allowances to make them more flexible. Um, the other thing that I am concerned about, and, and I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds here, but I did want to note one thing that was in here. Um, this is on the first page of the land use element under LU 2. It says, "Provision of multifamily living environments in small projects distributed along or in close proximity to the length of the Ojai Avenue corridor." It doesn't say anything about the Maricopa Highway Corridor, but, um, this would be a reason to worry about how big a parcel that we would eventually put an SPL tag on. Um, because I think we, we want, as, as one speaker at one of our previous meetings said, "The best way to integrate multifamily housing is the way it has historically been done here in the city." And that is if you walk all the blocks of the city, and my wife and I have, you see every once in a while, whoa, instead of residences, there's an apartment building. And it's kind of spread through, and unless you walk all the streets of the city, you don't really get a good feel for how many apartment buildings there really are, or maybe they're condos, I don't know, but multifamily housing units in the city. And, and if you, if you just drive through the city randomly, I don't think that you get a feel that this is an apartment community. It's a residential community that has some apartments in it. And I think that's a kind of historical development that we would want to encourage in the land use element and not, for example, take, take a big parcel of land in one part of the city and convert it all to multifamily housing and all of a sudden have, um, you know, a tremendous density increase in one part of the city. I think, I think the way that, that it has been done in the past has been very healthy and it maintains, uh, an atmosphere of a small town that has some apartments in it. And I kind of like that idea. And if we can stick with that sort of philosophy and at the same time make what we allow to happen in terms of development more flexible, to give people more opportunities to reside in the city, that I think will be in much better shape. And, and language to that, if policy language to that effect is something that I will strongly support, however the commission decides to word it.
Yeah.
Um, any other thoughts that we would want to pass on to staff at this point in terms of initial thinking? Commissioner Lottis?
I just have a question of staff. What is the, which, um, which general plan land use designation is the VU, VMU zone compatible, consistent with?
I think we have VMU as a part of the land use, but you're talking about, um-
Well, which, which general plan design can you apply the VMU zone in?
Take a quick peek here.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's the VMU for the zoning. And then if you go to the land use, um, there's the VMU as well.
Oh, can it, can it go in the, the general commercial also, or commercial man, or no, wait, general commercial also?
No, not general commercial. That would be a separate, um, zone. It'd be a different zone.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be compatible with the two in terms of how the code currently-
We could change, we could change that. I mean, if we did change it and made it consistent with general commercial, we could possibly-
Explore that option.
Okay.
For the sake of this, can I speak to that?
Okay. Um, uh, I see we have, uh, Councilmember Wirick, yes, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that particular issue. If you look at the council plan of work, this is something that's been on the plan of work for, at literally years, but never brought back to council for action. And that is that the VMU is listed in our code as a commercial and industrial zone.
Right.
And for years, council has asked that to come back for us to consider redesignating that as a special district, uh, listing.
Yes.
Uh, it never got to council. It aggravates me that it never has, but that speaks to the issue you're talking about, Commissioner Lottis, is that, uh, there's been some problems in the past because the, putting it in the commercial and industrial area doesn't recognize the residential component of, uh, and the, and the live work focus. It's not a commercial industrial zone. It's been in the, in the, uh, in the code that's way. I've asked for it to be chan, uh, brought to council to reclassify and discuss this. And it's literally, it's been on the plan of work for council, uh, to, to get after this and, and deal with this issue for years.
We, we don't have a, we don't have a piece of zoning- I've never seen the plan of work. I would love, I would love to.
Well, that's what we asked for at the joint meeting.
I would love to see it.
Start getting that again, so then that keeps us up to date with what-
That dovetails exactly with what you guys are talking about.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So how do we, how do we move it forward?
I, I don't know.
What do we need to do?
I, yeah, I, I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, you know, there, there's so many things that, but it is in the plan of work and it's one of those things that's been on the plan of work for years. It's never, never percolated back to council.
No.
I'll, I'll just, I'd like to comment on that if I could. It is something that I'm, that I'm working on currently. Um, but just know that it's something within the, the toolbox of several other things that, that are getting folded into it, so.
Maybe it's, maybe it's a matter of including the part of the code that deals with residential as well as in the part of the code that deals with commercial.
Correct. It, it's-
And, and one of the problems with that is that we've often passed things that were meant to apply to residential zones and then all of a sudden realized, oh, that doesn't include the VMU, which is certainly something part of our residential usage that we want to preserve. And so we have to write in there residential and VMU, uh, because it's, it's, it's listed as commercial and industrial zone. I, I think it's really a misnomer and I, it's, it's been years that I wish we could have gotten around to changing.
I think that's a good thing for the planning commission to take up and recommend to you, sir.
Yeah. And I, I have some other comments on this topic when it's appropriate. This is legislative, so I can, I can weigh in.
Um, why don't you do that now?
Okay. On, on water, I, I, I think that it's, we, we can't, in the general plan, I would like us to consider a focus on watershed ecology rather than just parcel by parcel conservation. And a particular example of that is, uh, the, the city of Ojai actually is a very high potential zone, be, based on the original, uh, sort of grading of, uh, drainage, uh, of, of stream channels for, uh, slowing, sinking and storing. In other words, repurposing our entire hardscape. I did a water budget calculation a while back that just, if we get 20 inches a year of rain, you know, remember that, that's supposed to be our long-term average, but let's just say we did. You know, there's, there's enough water just falling on our hardscape inside the city limits, uh, to meet our needs if it got, you know, if it got put into the, uh, into the production layer of the aquifer. And, and so what that relates to is how we deal with the entire hardscape with, you know, including our, the storm channels, the, the storm drains, uh, uh, maybe soft bottoming some of like Fox Baraka. So I, I just thought maybe language, we're, we're not just talking about parcel by parcel conservation, but watershed ecology of the city might be-
Well, yeah, but actually, you know, that, what that, where that really belongs is in the conservation element. I mean, that kind of thing.
Yes, I know, but we're not doing that, so.
So where does it go?
I don't know. I just thought I'd bring it up.
I, I totally, I totally agree with you that it's a very significant topic.
But I think, I mean, doesn't that fall within landscaping though? And doesn't that fall within, you know, when you're looking at parcel by parcel?
It definitely falls under transportation because that's our streets.
Right. Creating a hardscape standard.
Yeah.
I, I mean, those are two places where we could target some of it.
Yeah.
And, and we could, a lot, some of, I mean, certainly we could have, uh, some policy lang, language in the land use that, that does talk about that.
I'm not saying displace the parcel level standards, you know, I'm just, but have that be leveraged to a lot of ecology, you know?
Yeah, we could have rainwater harvesting. We could promote that. We could promote gray water systems, you know, all of that.
Right, right. But, you know, a lot of it's going to be on the, on the right of way of the city. And the other thing on the, on the, uh, uh, by the way, the council already has endorsed the spirit of what you're talking about on the manufactured industrial zone. And we basically said, "Staff, come back with us a way of letting the dispensaries move out of there," right? Uh, the cannabis dispensaries, we put them in there that were retail and a commercial of manufacturing and it does still, all, the council 100% endorsed coming back to us with, uh, revisions, uh, that are in the spirit of exactly what you're talking about. You know, uh, let the dispensaries come back in some fashion, uh, into the, the, the commercial zones and out of the manufacturing industrial area. So I appreciate that. I would, what I like about that is in the general plan and you're guided in terms of consistency on your policies, you know, to, to be, you know, with that. The other thing I wanted to point out is that on the fire, the same thing on fire, it's really fire ecology.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's, there's the individual, like the BAB coming back with the individual parcels, but there's also the valley-wide fire ecology. And I question how much we can do for insurability just in the 4.4 square miles unless we find a way to leverage to the entire valley. Uh, ha, you know, I've been hammering this idea of standards for hydrant, um, uh, testing and maintenance, uh, to meet, uh, insurance and standards, which helps with insurability. Uh, you know, looking at the, uh, the, the entire issue of the vegetation management, um, uh, you know, again, on a fire, uh, on a, on a valley, a fire ecology. And I'm wondering if ma, if there's any way to link, uh, the idea of what we can do with the city as, and advocating that we, we start figuring out how to do it on a valley-wide basis as well, if we're really going to be effective on the insurability issue.
It's something where the city is going to have to encourage the areas outside the city to be more fire resistant, or, or we're going to be lost.
Are we perhaps exercise leadership in setting up a valley-wide, uh, uh, land management system? You know, uh, like a, like a, a parcel tax that would, uh, on a, on a valley-wide level that- a valley wide level that would, uh, you know, engage in some of these, uh, issues for minimize, you know, improving our fire ecology. I, just a thought, I, I, you know, I just wanted to mention it. And, and then the, the other thing I wanted to mention was that uh, we have, we have the marked up, uh, urban forestry management plan that's been around, again, what, a year now, Kathy?
Yeah, at le, at least, yeah.
Uh, and so, uh, I think the way the existing general plan talks about it, I, I, I agree. Again, the herb, the urban for, the urban forest ecology is to be the focus. I'm really big on ecology tonight, but I, I think it's important.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, that, the, the marked up urban management plan, which is supposed to be reviewed, what, every three years or five years?
I think it's five, every five.
Five, and we're, we're basically five years out of date already.
Well, we're beyond five.
Or six or seven or eight year, whatever. Uh, and, uh, I think, uh, having a statement in the general plan about the right focus then gives guidance to how we update the, the specific urban, uh, the specific plans, uh, to be consistent with those policies, our con, our land constitution goals.
Right. And you've emphasized, you know, ecology, you know, watershed ecology, fire ecology, community forest ecology. And I agree.
I think that's part of sustainability. You gotta have.
You're looking at the entire system when you look at ecology, not just one species or one individual, like say lot, so to speak.
Right. So I, I've kind of, my thinking's really evolved in that direction. A lot of it from interacting with people like you guys, you know. Anyway, I just wanted to make those comments short and sweet and, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. That was great.
I'm sorry? Okay, staff was listening. Anything, anything more in the terms of general guidance for staff at this point that we would like to, that we would like to throw out here, uh, prior to at some future meeting getting into detailed discussions of this element?
I was just gonna make a couple of quick comments that, you know, there's some things in here where, you know, ideally I go, oh, that's great, but does it really protein? Like in LW two, it says a well-defined urban area surrounded by open spaces and grazing and agricultural lands. Well, we predominantly have that more in the unincorporated area, which prob, may even be, um, you know, it, it's not actually necessarily within the city limits. But maybe things like that need to get further defined.
I think.
And that could even tie into fire ecology.
Language there, yeah.
Yeah, that could, yeah, yeah. So anyway.
It might, oh, it might come into play because of the sphere of influence. I mean, if you include.
That's what I was thinking too. But, you know, maybe we go into a little more, once again, the ecology of that.
Yeah, I like.
Because it feels the same, the, yes, we're looking at what happens within the city limits, but at the same time with the ecology, it doesn't stop at a boundary necessarily. I mean, the boundary maybe is the watershed itself.
I, I think we do need to recognize the fact that over the last 50 years, the amount of open space in the city has been drastically reduced.
Right.
I think we're all probably familiar with the aerial view of the city that's in the conference room back here behind the council chambers. Um, I happen to have in my home, a corresponding aerial view of the city that, that was purchased by then Mayor Huckins in 1967. And it shows, for example, that Persimmon Hill may well have been a grazing area at that time.
Was it there?
It was empty. Um, the, the residential block bounded by Mountain View and Grand and Mercer and Grand View, I think, was open space. It's now occupied in part by where Commissioner Lottis lives. But in 1967, there were no roads in there.
Right.
There were the, um, Daly, Daly Road at that time went straight north, curved a bit, a little bit, and then went west and terminated where Daly Road now goes up the hill. And the land where, where you have the western part of Andrew and the northern part of Montgomery was again, all open space. There were no roads in there. Uh, I'm not sure, other than the property at 1440 Daly, which is arguably no longer agricultural land because all the trees are gone, all the citrus trees or avocado trees are gone, or the land next to it, I guess is still probably agricultural space. But that's about the last of the open space. And, and I think we need to take that into account. And if we want to talk of Ojai as surrounded by open space, then we need to be talking about the areas outside the city limits. Because there's practically nothing inside the city limits anymore. And what change that makes in our philosophy, I think, is, is more than minor because if we want to have open space around us, and I would argue that many people do, then we are going to have to do what we can to encourage or influence the people that are responsible for the areas outside the city to think along those same lines. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, it's a bit of a green belt, if you will, that surrounds the city currently.
I, I was recently in Austin, Texas. My son and his family live in southwest of Austin. And it is an area of many creeks and many housing developments gated, not gated communities, but, but semi-walled and, and articulated and separate communities. But where all the creeks are, there are green belts. We don't have the opportunity in Ojai to establish green belts anymore where there are creeks. And we still know there are creeks in the city. Um, but, so I think we need to try to encourage more open space wherever we can find it, close to and outside the city. Any more thoughts for staff in terms of general thought leadership at the moment? Or shall we move on? All right, let's move on. Item five, priorities of planning commission and community development department. Um, is there? Uh, boy, all right. The discussion, Lucas, you wanna give us a little bit there?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, um, I believe it was last week, actually. It doesn't, seems like that was a long time ago. A lot going on. Uh, but at the last meeting, we, we talked about the, the merging of really kind of two lists. Um, the list that was really kind of presented at the joint, uh, meeting with council. And then there was a list that was pulled up from 2019 and we kind of went item by item through that. I took notes and then took those items that really hadn't been, um, fully vetted out and inserted those into this list that you're seeing here, uh, tonight. Um, really, this is meant for a discussion. If the, if the commission is satisfied with where this list sits, uh, we could certainly send this off to, if the commission chooses, send this off to, um, city council to get their feedback on the list that, that's been created by this commission. But this is really kind of a discussion piece. Um, if there's additional items that we'd like to add from a work program standpoint, that's, that's what we're here for tonight to discuss that.
Okay. Um, I have one thought on that, and that is another item that, that we could potentially add to the list. And I don't know where I'd prioritize it. But that again is, as Commissioner Trent and I had mentioned, I think the other two commissioners as well, we need to do something about the very high fire hazard zone that is called Ojai and do something, and I'm not sure what it is in terms of land use per se, to, to, um, reduce that fire hazard. Part of it certainly is, is making sure that we have enough water for fire suppression throughout the city. Um, another part of it could be fuel management. And, and again, there, we have to talk about, we can regulate fuel management within the city, and we have to encourage it outside the city in the sphere of influence. Um, any other thoughts from commissioners about things that, that we would like to, uh, the, the listing here is generic enough that I don't think we need necessarily to modify any of the entries. But what would you think about adding availability of water, uh, in particular for fire suppression to the list, not knowing what we might do about it? But are there any other things that you think as a result of the discussion then and potentially tonight that ought to be on a list at this level recommending that this is what we think we should be working on and recommending to city council?
Steve, I just have a question.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yeah, um, so when you're referring to like fire hazard and fuel management and availability of water for fire protection or suppression, um, are you, because I know there's always that question of, is it, you know, something the building appeals board would be doing in the code?
Right. Is it something inside the house or is it general policy?
Yeah, looking at kind of terminology that would go into policy that would actually support what they're doing. Um, I mean, basically ours is the policy, what the building appeals board is doing. They're actually doing the actual items, so to speak, that would.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. And I think, um, it kind of ties in with, some of it does, with even like our tree ordinance, the water efficient landscape guidelines, but, and I could see other places. But, um, those are some places where we could.
Maybe, maybe we could call, maybe we could call that, that item mitigating the fire hazard in Ojai.
Yeah, mitigation of fire risk. I like that.
Mitigation of fire risk. I think that's good. The next hand I saw up was Commissioner Lottis. Please go ahead.
Um, so actually where the, those policies really belong is the, um, safety element. So when we get to the safety element, that's where we need, we need to have, I mean, we're, we should be going full, full, full steam ahead on all those issues with the safety element. And that's, that's the home for that kind of stuff. And as I, I mean, there's definitely bleed over or crossover into some of the other elements. But, but the home, the home for all of that is in the safety element. And, um, I assume we'll be getting to that, like, sometime in this year. Is that right, Lucas?
Year or so? Or less, good.
Yeah.
Perfect, perfect. It's perfect. It really is good timing. I mean, it's.
We need to do it.
Yeah, topic of everybody on everybody's mind. Um, I, but do we want to add, um, uh, based on the comments from Councilmember Wyerick, do we want to add the VMU zone to the, or VMU, uh, we, I mean, we have to work on both general plan consistency and the zone itself. I mean, do we want to put that on the list?
It's like a subtopic of the affordable housing goals and policies. Would it fall there?
Oh, maybe that would be.
Housing, yeah.
That, that could be part of it, certainly.
Yeah.
I think the general topic of more flexible zoning, uh, fits somewhere in this list that we already have. I'm just not exactly sure where. I imagine it's in the affordable housing goals and policies, but it's a broader topic than that.
It's a broader topic. I mean, I put it, I mean, I put it maybe towards the end or something, but, um, just because it's new to us, but, uh.
Right. But I think it's important, yeah.
Okay, so maybe we have a couple of things that we'd like to add to this. One being mitigating the fire hazard risk and the other being more flexible in zoning. And I think that really, that really involves, um, maybe permitting residential use in places that it isn't currently permitted. That's certainly, I think, a major aspect of that flexibility question. And whether that's converting something to VMU or doing something different, I don't know, but it's certainly a policy question. Go ahead, Lucas.
Yeah, so there's, it's, it's kind of interesting. I wrote this thinking about the merging of the two documents and after it was sent out. And just right now, I was reminding myself of two other items that, um, that city council has passed down to this commission for review and deliberation and then recommendation back to, to city council. The first one is formula business. That ordinance itself, I think that needs to be in here. I think the second one is.
Number two on the list.
And the second one, oh, it is. Thank you.
Yes.
The second one is sequo guidelines. Um, that was on a consent calendar by city council, and that's been passed down to this commission to, to review. In 2002 was the last time that we've updated those guidelines. They are grossly outdated. I didn't think that we even had guidelines until, um, staff presented me with something that doesn't necessarily say what I thought it was gonna say, but it certainly encompasses how we address looking at, um, environmental documents in terms of the process and each of the, um, the basic.
At one point, I thought the seek, the, the city's sequo guidelines were those that were instantiated in state law and just incorporated wholly by reference.
Yeah, so.
Saying there's more than that?
There is. Um, each city is required by law to have guidelines in place. And to update those guidelines, we have fallen short of that.
Do they appear in the municipal code somewhere?
The guidelines themselves, no. They are, they are through state statute and they're by reference. Um, the last time that we updated them was by resolution.
Where do this, where are the city's sequo guidelines in print?
On our website currently.
Okay. Well, then.
Uh, Chair Quillissey?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, there is a default. You don't do anything. You know, the state gives you the default that you're supposed to adapt, in my understanding, uh, in your, uh, in your individual city guidelines. But you have local discretion to try and think about the development patterns, the land use patterns that you want, that are, that are important to your city and your character of the city. And you can think about how that is linked by how you do your evaluation of local discretion over sequo guidelines to those outcomes. And, uh, that also should be consistent with your general plan, in my opinion. Uh, that, you know, maybe somebody can quibble with that. But we have not reviewed this in a long time. Uh, it's something, again, one of those sort of multi-year things that I've been pushing for, uh, that we, uh, we have a discussion on this. Um, it's one of those easy things to defer, but it's really important. And I'll give you one small example, you know. Uh, you don't, in my opinion, the traditional way of evaluating sequel impacts for traffic has been level of service. Well, that's basically consistent with a sprawl outcome.
That's.
That's not consistent with sustainability as we understand it today, where you want to use a vehicle miles traveled standard. Uh, and you're gonna get different types of evaluations and different outcomes. So I, I think this is a really important issue, um, to think about how it relates to your land use constitution and how you want to use, exercise local discretion on these sequo thresholds and, uh, and, and protocols. I, I don't know if that made any sense, Chair Quillissey, but I just, I wanted to weigh in.
No, no, I think that's right. And, and as I think about it more, uh, I suspect that the, that the, uh, the, the questions of mitigating fire risk and sequo guidelines should, should be added to this list. And I think that the increased flexibility of zoning, um, could come into item five, not the design guidelines map, but the policy review, um, at least could, could incorporate that flexibility in zoning. Yes, ma'am. Sherry?
I know that you are saying fire suppression mitigation just plain, but just in February last year, high fire ordinance was adopted and at the building level, we are enforcing a lot of different codes. a lot of different codes additional from the city than the states as well. But so maybe water would be more appropriate to say, because you're looking for water. But just seeing high fire suppression mitigation, we do have a new ordinance that, a recent one.
I think the difference there is that we're going beyond it. I think the BAB talked pretty extensively about it. And I think that's something that more than likely will be before this commission at some point. I can't speak for how that's, that's going to end up happening, but.
Well, the BAB, the BAB, I think, looks at what kind of water is available at a parcel and what impact does that have on the design of the buildings that are on that parcel. And I think what we're, what we may well be talking about here in mitigating fire hazard risk or fire risk is making a bigger pie, not deciding what to do with one slice of the pie.
Yeah, and looking at the entire valley versus just looking at the city of Ojai.
Yeah.
And how do we do that? How do we partner with the county or come up with some sort of special task, you know, unit that can help with that throughout the entire valley?
Thanks for that clarification.
One little detail would be, you're not allowed to grow tinder on your property. That's a land use under fuel management. So we added SEQA guidelines.
Mitigating fire risk.
And mitigating fire risk to this list. And what else was there?
And then we've, we've taken and folded into number five, which is the design guidelines map and policy review, more flexible, flexibility in zoning as kind of a general term or phrase. I don't know if it could be rephrased. I could probably rephrase it slightly, but something along those lines.
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's a broader topic than affordable housing goals, but it's definitely a policy level thing. Are there, are there more things that we ought to suggest to staff at this point? Or are we in agreement on adding a couple of items to the list?
We don't want to make staff run away.
Right, and we want to make sure that we can actually address, because when, you know, when we check one or two off, we can always add something new.
Yes, right.
But we don't want it to be overwhelming. And I guess the other thing is, maybe this is a question for Lucas. I don't know if the numbering also indicates priority, or is that something we need to do in addition to this?
It was meant to, to identify priority, I think.
Okay.
That joint meeting, the general plan and then affordable housing, obviously the housing element seemed to be the, the one that was reigning true as the number one.
That's the most urgent, certainly.
Right, and then, of course, we know the formula business code is, we have the moratorium, we need to get that addressed as well.
I'll have to be frank, I, the only reason why I identify that as number two is because we do have a kind of a, a window of opportunity here to make those revisions, so.
Exactly.
I'm seeing it as a higher item, if the commission is seeing.
Do something during the moratorium and be done with it.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
You know, actually, I would put the Title X update further down, really, because unless we have specific, specific, you know, the tree ordinance, I guess, would be a, a more important, but, you know, we really, we really want to, we really want to do the policy, the, the comprehensive thinking first, and then we go in and we make those changes to Title X. I mean, that's really the, the better approach. Unless we have something more urgent like the formula business, possibly the tree ordinance, and there might be some other things too, specifically.
Well, let's, let's add these other two items to the list, have a list of seven, and, and try to address it as much as we can at a policy level before we get down to redlining and ordinance.
I agree.
Unless it's something like formula business where we have clear direction from the city council to go do something while there's a moratorium in place, then we have to do that. But, but otherwise, at least start at the policy level and see what we can get agreement on. That be all right?
Sounds good.
All right. I don't think we need to vote on that, do we? You have, you have enough of a sense of where the commission is going on this and wants to recommend?
I do. We can, we can put this on for the next agenda as well and, and, and further discuss it and iron it out.
Okay. Well, let's move on then to item six, tentative agenda for future agenda items. And I look at October 6th and I gasp.
So, let me just go through this real quick and also give you some, some realistic pieces because I am working on all three of these as well as staff is as well. Realistically, I'm going to have to be completely honest, I don't think all three.
Mike, Lucas? Mike?
Shoot, I thought I had it on, I'm sorry. Sometimes you think you have it on and you start talking and, and just have that feedback. Okay, so I've, I've been working extensively and so has staff with all three of these items. The work, the work plan, we just saw that, we'll, we'll come back with some revisions and iron that out some more. Realistic, I don't, I don't see all three of these going at the same time. I have, I have a strong feeling that one of these will more than likely be continued. I can't tell you which one it is currently, only because I'm hoping that we can come to conclusions on a couple of items that we are currently not coming to conclusions on. So I, I can't speak to which one that is, but I can just tell you that one of these will likely get continued.
You're negotiating with three different groups right now and the first two through the door get to.
The first two seem to be agreeable, the third one does not seem to be as agreeable. So that's, that's where I'm at with that. So I know it sounds like a logjam, to be quite honest, but I really don't, unless something, in some, some sort of a miracle comes through in the next week, I really think that one of these is going to be continued.
Okay. And I know we now bumped 407 West Ojai Avenue to October 20th, but I think from our discussion tonight, that's going to resolve itself by, by the applicant withdrawing the.
That's what it sounded like. We'll, we'll talk to them offline and see, see where they're at here, but I think you're probably right. More than likely, they are, they're just going to withdraw and move forward with something that just requires a signed permit down at staff level.
Okay.
I mean, they could come back at any point with a.
They could.
Wall.
That's true, but it, I think, and, and it wouldn't be, it doesn't sound like it would be the, the current applicant, it would be the next applicant in line.
Would be somebody else helping a family put together a proposal.
Potentially the true, the true property owner, which we could hear in the background. So we'll talk to them offline and see what's going on.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff on future agenda items?
Also on the 20th, I just want to make note, the AT&amp;T Wireless Telecommunications, we've recently been made aware of a piece of information that is incomplete at this point. So that clock has stopped for that item and we are waiting to hear back from them. And we actually, sorry, we've already heard back from them, they're saying it's going to be a couple of weeks before they get us something. So that's pushing this item out past October and into November.
And gives us maybe some wiggle room for one of the three on October 6th.
Potentially, because I have a feeling that, that one of those will shift to the 20th.
Okay. Okay.
So I, just as a reminder, does this commissioner remember at the beginning of this year when I said, I have a lot of items that I'm looking at, I'm just not sure where they're going to land? Here we are, they're landing right here, right now. It's just kind of weird how sometimes that works out. You can never really fully predict how these applications are going to be processed. You send out corrections, you're looking for additional information. Sometimes they all come at the same time, so. When it rains, it pours, I suppose.
Okay. Let's move on. Item seven is Commissioner Reports and CDD Report. Anything that commissioners want to bring up before the commission, other items of interest, things that are going on? Okay. Lucas, anything else that you'd like to add?
Nothing at this point, just excited to keep doing some of this work. This is good work.
All right. Well, then we're, we're to the, the concluding act of the show this evening. Our city council liaison, Mr. Wyerick.
Yeah, I, I, I want to pick up on the sentiment that Commissioner Lottis eloquently stated. Lucas, I hope I don't, my, my frustration doesn't come across as anything personal. I just, you know, I've just been, it's, it's easy to, it's easy to be, have expectations on staff that are unrealistic when you have such a small staff. And Lucas and his, and the people that work with him do a lot of extremely dedicated work. So it's, I, sometimes I just get frustrated, that's all, you know, with things that drag on for years, you know, that I need to get addressed. But that doesn't take away from the respect that, that I have for the work that you guys do. Yeah, I talked about landing all at the same time, getting this housing element done, all these issues. Let's not forget ATP isn't quite done either. I, I, it's, yeah. It's going to be a very, very interesting fall. And so I really appreciate you. I hope we get back to full strength as soon as possible. I, I'm not, I'm not the one that initiates that in terms of, I'm not, it's not my turn, but I've certainly been making inquiries. You need, you need your, your full complement of commissioners, so.
Love to have a fifth commissioner.
Y'all's work.
Yeah. Do you have any indications of that, of, of a nomination to the commission being?
I think we're getting, I think we're getting very close.
Okay, good.
Yeah. I think everybody understands the need to get something, get a nomination to council as soon as possible. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate your indulging me. You know, you can tell I, I think about these things, I get kind of passionate about them. So, thank you.
Well, you're not, you're not an ordinary member of the general public, sir. We do work for you. And, and.
Anyway.
My point of view, at least, anytime that you want to inject yourself into the conversation, your thoughts are welcome because so much of what we do will come back to you. And we'd like to know if there are going to be things that are unacceptable, in your opinion, to a large part of the city council, we should move on from that and find compromises or other mitigations of, of positions.
Right, but, you know, we were, we were at it till midnight last night and my wife is texting me going, really? Anyway. Good night, guys.
Okay, well, thank you for your thoughts, sir. And absent any other business before the commission, at 8:44, I declare this meeting adjourned.